Welcome everyone to today's time on some general purposes meeting. So meeting is being recorded and streamed on YouTube as well as. I'm one of the agenda for me to call to process. So we've got apologies from. Pumps like. Along with Helen and David. Couple of health reasons and personal reasons, does everybody accept those apologies? I think two declarations of interest, anybody got any declarations? And you're getting on the agenda.
I actually got a lot of notes somewhere, they didn't say although they're not in.
I just don't know. Right, procedural and appropriate announcements from the chair.
That was just, if that's all right, just to be mentioned.
So just a few things, obviously there's an event on a beach museum on Saturday, two o'clock.
Two o'clock on Saturday.
And there are still some tickets available for that, if anyone would like to go, if you could pass the information on and. The staff will organise that, we've also got our own memorial on Sunday at three thirty, it's near off at the wheel near the school and obviously everybody's invited to attend that. And then just a reminder also for nominations for the mayor's awards. Nominations by Friday in Kingies and Roxtonville events on the 13th of March, so if you've got your nominations, you can just get those everything on this back party. Thank you. And I implore public participation, we don't have any members of the public here, do we gather in close to all the signs?
No, I can't think.
So we'll leave out five confirmation of minutes, so we need to approve as per record outside the minutes of finance and general purposes committee and is out on the 12th of January, which is attachment in the pack. Anybody? Got any comments or we copy to? You're those notes?
Is that so, that layer three and then?
Page six, allotment associates spending things, members of the allotment committee met on February comes noted, revealed and approved, so recommended associate spending requirements over five of each items. In line with the allotment plan and budget and cables this year. Probably didn't see in the meetings. Finance and general purposes committee asked to note and approve the recommendations from the allotments committee. Now, obviously people, not other than people who were at the allotments, we can not see these, so.
We can go through it all if you want, just really briefly to explain what it's all about, if that would help people. Obviously, as you're aware, payments over £500, we'd like to get approval now, which is obviously a safe procedure to do. Essentially, the council have already agreed the allotment provision plan. And obviously that's in line with budgets and finances that are attached to it anyway, but because there's now that we're at a point where there's a number of items, we need to. To get the setup of the service. I'm now, I'm now looking for the items that are highlighted in yellow, because we need to get hold of them now. Just, just to give you a bit of an outline, we've, we've been successful with the UK SPF funding, where we've received. Eighty-two thousand, one hundred pounds in total funding. It's part of the plan for growing communities together, that's the whole ethos of what we want to do. I'll give you a little reminder, it's crucial, it's crucial that town council create a sense of community ownership. Provide guidance and support for the community in working and running allotments effectively and sustainably. This is especially important for association-led allotment sites. If the town council is aimed to support the allotment community in Stanley with the support, understanding, education, importantly, the various tools to improve the allotment sites. To ensure sustainable futures, how they can develop the sites and provide workable plans to ensure this happens. Obviously, that's the, the objective of the plan in a nutshell, but obviously the plan's in a lot more detail that you approved. So obviously there's, there's the, the yellow items that I need the permissions to start spending some money. If you go to page. Five, item seven, budget implications. Finances, budget available has been fifty thousand available for twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. There was a near mark reserve of forty-three and a half thousand pounds rolled over to the provision and setup. And obviously eighty-two thousand, one hundred is made up of the UK SPF funding. And to help set, set up the delivery plan for growing communities together. And that's made up of sixty-four thousand pound equipment grant and eighteen thousand, one hundred pound community infrastructure. Works, which will include. A community allotments officer, so that totals one hundred and seventy-five thousand, six hundred total available. Now, the, the next line shows a bit of an indicative price, but that's because of. It's dependent on what we manage to get value for money wise in terms of, of certain bits of equipment that we buy. However, we have got some apps which is on some of the big items anyway. And it's all followed the procurement process of getting close, visiting demonstrations, going through everything that we needed to. So. In blue, it's highlights what. It will cost the, the, the town council and the green is the contribution. To break that down, we've got the, we've got the first. Item, which is item one, the track skid, UK SPF contribution of fifty thousand pounds. An actual cost to us of five thousand, six hundred pounds. Which is excellent, they've approved that and they approved our, the different quotations and the use of it and why it's needed as part of the, the plan. Item two is three thousand, five hundred contribution from. The UK SPF and three and a half from the STC fund. Item three, it's no cost to us, because the UK SPF are carrying out costs for that. Item four, there's a cost of one thousand, five hundred and fifty pounds to us because UK SPF are covering six thousand, four hundred pounds of it. And then the, the next items, there's no UK SPF costs, so you've got the tipping trailer, which is six, three to us. Brush cut up, there's a big difference in price there, but that's due to the trials that we've got to carry out, so we will be able, be able to identify. Which items best for us on that, and obviously any of those items now, if I'd got you a quote for today. In a week's time, that could be completely different, whereas those sort of items do fluctuate, but we would go through the proper human exercise to do that. And then the rest is. Some of the power, power tools that are needed. Three thousand, some hand tools at five hundred. And then the vehicle for the, the project, which is going to help us move the equipment around and carry out the works. I've actually based this just on what the purchase cost would be, however, we can explore the leasing option if need be. So we, you know, we, we will look into that when we go for, when we, when we start trying to purchase it or, or hire it. But I valued it between thirty and forty-five, but that can depend on the make and what deals we get that are out there. As everyone knows, vehicles can change quite a bit and depend on what you get and whether they've got. A thousand miles on it, no miles on it, or, or if we go through the leasing option. So, you know, the total to Stanley Town Council would be, be between fifty-three, nine hundred to seventy-seven, four hundred, that's depending on those bits of kit. And the UK SPF fund is put sixty-four thousand, four hundred pounds towards that. So it's really, it's been really, really good us receiving that funding. I have put a further budget consideration in this and it's to make you aware. If you go to page seven, obviously when you buy equipment, it's a bit like environmental services, all your equipment that we have. You have to maintain it, you have to look after it, and you do have to replace it eventually. But obviously, the, the more you look after it, the more you service it, the more you regulate it, the longer it lasts. So I, I've tried to future plan for the council so that we're not left with some. Trying to find money, which, which we have found in the past, we don't want that to happen anymore. So I sent, I've based it over a seven-year plan. We, we must budget an essential amount annually, and that's for repairs and maintenance, fuel and insurance for, for the items that we get, that we need to get. The non-essential, but I would recommend that council may want to consider that or have further discussions wherever down the line. Is to put a certain amount of money away in reserves annually, so that in seven years' time, you're not suddenly hit with a great big cost of, of replacing a service. Those prices or those amounts are based on a five percent increase yearly. And that figure, those, those figures there are the absolute max, because we will get. Some offset costs for anything that we trade in, and below that are different, different scenarios on how we could. Finance some of those costs in the future as well, consideration. Essentially, that's the report that the allotments may be working on, we're working in line with the approved plan. To drive forward and, and start getting things done and, and we're now at that stage where we can really start trying to knuckle down and get on with it. Fearing in mind Durham County Council depart from us in a matter of weeks now, and. We need to be proficient on how we run the service, so hopefully that helps a little bit.
That's true. Questions on that?
Let her go first.
No, I was just gonna say that for those of us who, who were at the meeting, it wasn't just a case of looking at it and going, yeah, go on then. You know, we, we did ask questions and we did. Well, challenge you on certain items as whether or not they were, you know, but absolutely essential. I did say some of them are absolutely essential, but they'll be very useful. And basically, we had two hours of backwards and forwards and so it, it's not that we've just sat there and nodded it through.
Right, so a bit less.
Do you know if this all works on, if I have a new one or the seven thousand pounds?
Yeah, so that's towards the, you know, the, the part of the growing communities together, we receive funding for a community allotment offer as part of the plan. Where we're fifty percent funding that person's post, the UK SPF are fifty percent funding that. And so obviously they're contributing towards a vehicle for that person. The idea of that person is to be, from obviously all the work I've been doing the last year, there, there tends to be. A feeling towards allotment offices from the different sites, and that's because the allotment offices that perhaps try to do some good things are also carrying out the enforcement. So part of the plan that was agreed, agreed, it's about growing communities together. And a lot of the association sites are failing due to not understanding governance, not understanding their constitution. Not understanding why they need insurances or how they regulate their approaches to waiting lists, et cetera. So that person is very much going to be a part of that to help them build hubs and have a good understanding on how they can run their allotments. They'll also look at doing things like. Community markets with some of the excess produce that's provided, cooking schemes. Work in the high-impact locality areas where there's a lot of poverty, how we can share this, share, share the extra produce and obviously a lot of education and business planning. So that vehicle was very much about having a small vehicle that that person can go out, help people, go out delivering, work with them. And it might be the packed house wanting to receive a load of goods from Pearson Street allotment shop that they've all had loads of stuff donated, they can get that down there. That's the reason for that vehicle.
The other thing is a lot of power drill cutters or power drivers. Obviously, you haven't got any additional staff and cost, we'll be trained and keep them necessary. And quality gear will have to be reviewed at a certain amount of times or.
It's already a near mark budget for training. Where they'd carry out any, any, any qualifications, they actually need to carry them out. A BMPTC training down at the college, which I have a meeting with actually the lady tomorrow down there, a lot of these things are actually free now, because there's some big budgets attached to that. However, you don't need to have a qualification to use a drill or some of the items, but what any items that you do, I would regulate that and make sure that people do have the essential training to carry that out.
The other thing is, there's quite a few different vehicles, different sizes, different whatever. Do we, as a council, have a training programme that people can make sure they're competent to drive? Trucks and that, I know people's got licenses, but.
It's something that the council may wish to, to explore for the future, but nothing, no, no reason why we shouldn't. I mean, obviously there, you have your licence, which allows certain things, but as a council, you need to decide whether you want to have that in place. If you do, then it's something that we should perhaps look at. I mean, there's certainly courses you can go on for reversing trailers and things like that, you know, it's.
Anybody answer?
Oh, I think it's wonderful that we've got a grant, more than happy that we've got a grant, I always love a bit of passion in me. And I think, I think we should, before any of them drive anything, and you and I have been down the road. We need to, to fix for this council a reversing policy. Things happen to people if vehicles are not reversed properly, unless and I have been down there. I think, I think for me, my question is not about what I'm spending, it's about what I'm going to get back. So my question is, the, the, not the allotments that we are taking care of, but the arms then for lots of associations. They pay for themselves, so are we going to charge them for a service that we provide? So if we go in and we do whatever, is there a cost coming back to the council? And that cost could then sit in an account and either of both can sit in a separate account. But if we do a job for an association, that amount of money comes back, it sits in, in, in a lot of association account. And that account is then used to facilitate the allotments, if that makes sense.
Can I try and answer that for you? So the plan that everyone received at full council and approved. Durham County Council, when they've been running a lot of things, this is what, this is what essentially builds this plan, okay? Because Durham County Council. Had a pot of quarter of a million pounds for allotment association to bid into. And the way they bid into that is by filling out the, by providing the several documents that, that they had to hand in as a constituent of association. They also had to provide a business plan. Now, this funding pot was quite unsuccessful because the associations didn't really assign, decided how to go about it, okay? So that's one of the reasons why we wanted to grow in community together, that was an ethos of why we managed to secure this funding. Okay, because essentially they looked at it as it's a really good thing that we're trying to do here. Now, we don't have a million-pound budget to be able to start trying to help some of these associations get going. And quite frankly, they all need massive investment. They're all dilapidated, or should I say ninety percent of them are dilapidated. And a lot of the associations actually don't really understand the, the governance side of things. So part of the bid was, we will have these specialist bits of equipment and we will have a team. And what we will do is we will help these associations initially, to get themselves sorted out, understanding the governance. Turning plots around quickly for them, so that they can let them out and provide themselves more revenue coming in. Give them understanding of why they need to increase their rents when their rents aren't enough at the minute to be sustainable. So by showing that support, but what we will do is if there's ad hoc bits of work, like those just said there, that save the association, they have, because remember, we get to see what they have in their accounts. If they decide that actually they do need to put some new facilities in or something, then yes, we can go along and we can. Give them a quotation, which would be massively below what the commercial amount would be for, for a private contractor to come in. So yes, we can start clawing some money back towards any money that we invest. Also, a lot of these associations, if they fail, which I would say, I, I, you know, is my desire, as I'm being reported, is my desire to make these associations work. And give them that community opportunity to run themselves, however, we have a responsibility as a council that if they fail. We need to take them back in house, and when we take them back in house, we want them to be in the best condition possible. Now, if we do not support these associations, they will, if they don't, if they don't succeed, will continue to decline and dilapitate. Which essentially will be more cost to this council in the future. So it's really, really important that we provide that support, identify where we can actually put some charges in to support them. Because you think about it, if we're turning it around quickly for them, the support, and it means they're going to be able to let out plots quicker. They're going to, more people are on the waiting lists, so that's the whole idea around it, Joe, you're absolutely right, we have to look at ways we can sort of. And, but also with these bits of kit as well, we can have a do other service level agreements, which we've started to start building upon it already. So, you know, one of the bits of kit that we're actually getting, a real specialist bit of kit, which would be very valuable for people to call upon our services. So, yeah, we knew there was going to be some setup costs, and ultimately it's well worked and finance committee considering that actually. Stuff that we're getting or the equipment we get would be the equivalent of having another three or four officers. That would get the work done a lot longer time, if we don't have that money to start forking out loads more salaries and have a bigger team. So we need to work clever, but we have to remember it's the community we need support. It is heritage, the allotments, it is culture, it is the biggest that I know of in the, in the north area. So we've got to do something and ultimately let's try and improve these associations, if they fail. They will have to come back in house and maybe in a better position for us to take them back to house.
I mean, I don't have as much questions, or mind if you want it. And personally, I feel that we give the best chance to plan. And it turns out it's fine in the plan, there's a clear plan, there's a plan there straight away. And James is writing the fact that if it all falls through with certain aspects of it. We need to have as little chaos as possible, we're having a peril so far with the allotment project. So my, I've come back to me up and down. And getting the best chances, it's us. We've got the sample gentleman.
Anything else?
Absolutely, what I'm just saying, there isn't very much of a plan yet going forward, you know what? I'm not just looking in the next year for that, well, it'll be sending me in the future. And I think. What James has put in about looking at. And a bit of extra money for the maintenance budget and for maybe unexpected costs or extra costs that might occur. Is a really good idea and please keep that in there, so we can, you know, not just agree in a small budget, we have to look at what might come up. And one thing I would say is with that cost for. And the pickup truck, I would very much prefer at least one three of them outright. Because seeing with our own vehicles, the service thing that people can provide us, and not when they're having to take on all that costs ourselves is a benefit. And so at least that would be my third way to go forward with that. Because then it doesn't fall the cost directly of course.
Absolutely, for you, Joe, we, we can do that, the rea, the reason why I did an outright cost was essentially to give you an idea, an indicative idea of what the cost is going to be. It's impossible to give that exact figure. And also that type of vehicle in the second-hand market, it does hold its value a lot more than any other type of commercial vehicle. So sometimes it's not actually a bad investment from the research I've done, but by all means, I will go through the different processes. To compare what is best, what is most thrust, because it could be that it's on a seven-year rolling program, so actually after seven years, you can just replace a bit like higher purchase type scenario, but yeah.
I, I'm gonna, when we get to that stage, I'll bring a report back to you. At this stage, I'm saying, I think the leasing option tends to look better for.
Absolutely, yeah.
I agree with you, someone, I think, that's something we've got to explore, you know, bring it back and see which is the best option.
Yep. I'm, I'm not, I've got to say, you know, to lease a vehicle is much better than to purchase a vehicle. So the plans are, I mean. I leased two of the vehicles, I understand, so when I have my business, it's much better to lease a vehicle.
A lot of questions? So obviously, there was quite a lot of information taken there, but you've had quite a good discussion on this. Everybody happy to make a decision on this now? So, I'll be happy to note and approve the recommendations really long, if you know. Anything to add?
It's broken, broken, sorry. No suggestion, open, put that in. Do we need to, we don't need to have a recommendation?
Yeah, essentially you've kind of already approved it, but it's doing the full circle and making sure that it's approved again, crossing all the C and dotting all the I's, so yeah.
So the allotment committee recommends it, and the finance committee, the finance committee recommends it to the full council.
Yes. We only improved the plan, we've secured funding.
We can approve a plan, but it's not nearly the plan.
Before with it, maybe to be recommended and then go.
Seemed very, very thorough, which is good.
It goes to all the communities that get screwed out, it's important.
I'll agree a bit more when we get some money back in.
Yeah, although we were too.
I like, I like a bit of cash, we. Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. I'm going to cash that. Yeah, I'm going to take a few for this.
Cash roll.
So I just, so we're, I'm at eight and seven. And when, I'm going to speak now, I've managed to work in good recommendations, which is attachments though. So if you're going to approve the recommendations, in advance for the, for the match on Tuesday, I'm going to, I'm going to, your turn now. And so we met on the fourth, we reviewed four different areas, that included the events support tender, which I'm pretty sure everybody agreed. Safety is our key thing for all of our events that we do. So we need to bring in necessary organisations who are qualified to carry out exactly everything, because at the moment it is just me on the events group, so. I can't do a whole job.
You've tried.
Tried. And so it is recommended by the events working group to move forward with this tender and carry out the necessary work to input somebody. I know it does mention the event manager, steward and welfare, but it does include safety officer where as possible. We do work with one currently, but it's not always available, so we are going to add it in. And we also looked at sponsorship opportunities, which myself and Marga are going to look at in the future, see how we can bring in some money in our events, whether it be. Doing like small activities or sponsoring the entire thing, it's just helps with the costs and all together. And it's a good opportunity for local business and major businesses. And we reviewed the front of food scheme, so last year we supported nine different organisations at eleven thousand, eight hundred pounds. And all of them ran events in St Ives throughout the summer, which I'm pretty sure were all well attended, I have asked for feedback, so we'll get that series when I get it. And it's recommended to continue going forward with this, having conversations with AAP. But ensuring that all of the awards benefit from it and all communication of it is really in fact to councillors when available. And developing and understanding the expectations, what the council definitely want to achieve, so once we get those articles approved. Uh and developing and understanding the expectations, what the council definitely want to achieve, so once we get those ideas approved. I'll speak further, which was all on it. Last item was the event plan for twenty twenty five. So the group had a presentation, it's probably a bit longer than what it needed to be, plus, I guess. And so we brought a recommended calendar, so from the small little events that we usually do, that we'll continue doing. To major events such as like on board to stay at the activity, playing the park, whichever format it takes. And we did discuss in depth the free activity week format. It was recommended by the group to carry on with that area of doing it. Well, then the play in the parks just for the different reasons such as cost, time, paperwork, locations, all that side of it. Um with the entire plan, it is recommended that we continue with this course or develop this, and bring it back for council. And that's our solution. And so that's.
Anybody have any questions?
I should just come in first. Sorry. So the, is the activity week going to be in Stanley with you?
Yes.
So. You make an assumption that everyone will get to Stanley. You can look at location, you're already at the end of it. And I know, I know that's why you changed to play in the parks. And but I still feel that there is, and I'm going to say this. We might be able to do things in Stanley, but do you know what? If we put a trip on the South Shields and picked twenty people up in catch weight, twenty people up in Anfield Park, twenty people up in wherever, whatever. Whatever that happens to be, I'm not sure if that wouldn't get us a better result than. Or, or as well as, I, I don't know, I just think a lot of people might in a sense. And I know what stays around three pound, but if you haven't got three pound, I tell you what, you haven't got it, you haven't got it.
No.
But that's me being parochial.
Can I just ask, well, the numbers were, Alex, because I take on board what, what you're saying, Joe, but what were the actual?
So for the five days, I know we cancelled it one day or two or whatever, but we had exactly three thousand people. Done.
Yeah, much, yeah. Could we tell whether they were sending people over and over again, or whether they were?
We didn't have anything in place for it at that time, but there's nothing to stop us from doing something like that.
It's just, you're taking your point, but if we only did, even if we did seven wards and we took twenty people, it's only a hundred and forty people. Whereas three thousand is, you know, quite significantly more. So, yeah, and we've got to be, if, if, if you, um, you know, there's absolutely no way that those will only be standing people. Would it?
We had discussed this on Saturday about um looking at providing transport from different places within Stanley to get it. Because that's my point, if it is going to be in one place, is there a way that we can look at providing transport for families? I mean, that's not but, but going and leaving, you know, it's, it's.
I, I've been realised, we were trying to do some research and people coming through the door to find out where they come from. The next year, we're, we're as well, just, just to help, you know, next year's committee sort of make those sort of decisions. No, no, no.
It was, it was actually the transport thing, yeah, um it wasn't that, I was saying that the. I, I do think people who were there came from a wider area, just because, you know, talking to people there, they say that. Um but I definitely think that we are in most of the problems with transport. Even if it was only a one thing from a set time in the morning to get there and then get back time back in the afternoon. It would, it would, well, it would be more inclusive, yeah, yeah.
And all I was going to say was, you know, personally, I like to play in the park. Because it's, you know, said this in the conversations we've had, because it is then. Very, you know, it always used to be really, really popular and it was very well attended back in the days before Covid. I think Covid knocked everything on edge, it is. And, and particularly then we put it out to tender, and that was the death knell, I mean, it was. And but I do understand why it is the way that it is, because of the logistics, you know. The health and safety, the, the money of transport, things everywhere, all the rest of it. But I do think that we, um, we need to think about the, you know, getting people there thing. But the other thing that I think we should think about is the actual place that we had it, because I'm not sure that N D A. You know, pretty windswept, awful, you know, nearly blew everything uh all hours, we've been here, it was a week. Was a good place and doesn't need to be in Stanley. And you look at somewhere else that has the size, that could transport everyone to there.
I'm the right thing, thinking the part would be attracting the vendors here was the most, so, yeah. So that, that is sort of claiming considerations. So, and so the main pattern, we tried to attend the play in the parks and. To be effectively, I found the, obviously I've got six year olds now and teenagers. It was quite manic for me personally, trying to find stuff that's mind English for doing. And because there were a lot of children on supervised at play in the parks.
Mm hmm.
And teachers didn't get a look in, whereas at the attempt week, and then the time period was too short for. I think it was one was too short for, and one was too young for. We actually managed to go on multiple things at the time and fill them in straight children.
Which, so, which is what happens down at Tamfield. Um because that's a big open field. Um I was watching children coming in on their own in big groups, eight or nine of them, and thinking. Where do they come from? Who, who's with them? And basically, the answer was nobody. Yeah, and so they were just piling in and it led to, as you were saying, you know, some of the smaller children not getting a look in. They were just going through, so I would prefer if they somewhere even control.
Yeah.
Or you have.
And safety and it's.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, obviously we've done it in the year for Christian, as a big enclosed space. There's nothing to say that we couldn't look at other locations in the Stanley area. And obviously, I think that, that is an important part of people's safety and about.
Yeah.
And making sure the space is enclosed and managed, because what you should do that, play in the parks. And to put them on to transport to some of the, some of the villages that are on the outskirts, like. They're playing at the Tamfield, is a good idea, even if it's a case you say about, there's going to be a bus that picks you up from this community centre at this time.
Yeah.
And make sure you're there.
Yeah.
You know, just trying to sort of encourage people to come. I think part of this is, you know, especially if asking people to post code, the last thing to think about. If part of, you can even tag you the gas, is it like canvas and people see what they want. And when we come and look at this again for the next time, we can take those lessons on board. Because it is never a change of plan, you know, the events under, always has spaces, things that have changed every year. You have a working group, we keep looking at it, so I think, you know, if we take on the ideas. That have been made today, look at how we can incorporate that in the plan and then look at what ideas we get from the public. At these events, the resources and goods to the tour events that people want and a safe and manageable way.
Anybody else?
No.
You did some research, so let's say, can, yeah, you can, you can just maybe build a problem out.
I think that is, um. Oh, sorry. And this is probably something that wants to be, in getting good set up, and hopefully can get some. I wish. Well, it's a Jesus. I'm sure that I'm not right, doing sideways or off the finish, some of those issues.
I mean, that's, I've, you know, regardless of what the event is, whether it's a small event or a bigger thing. You know, we, we always need to be taking on feedback from the residents, like from our residents and like. You know, understanding what they want, so at the end of the day, we all hear, present them. So whether it's the case of you have a conversation with someone, or some, some of the largest stuff we do, we do a bit more of a process of feedback. But we have always need to keep our, our, what people actually want us to provide as a candidate, of just what we think is best, yeah.
Okay, that's what we're happening to.
Yeah.
And so our members are happy to approve the recommendations of the events, events working. Yes, possibly nothing to, those years. We move on, it's a page for members, which is. Um so, I don't know if we've got a suggestion though.
Mr. Um, see, I was thinking, and I just asked about this, have you had any more come in? Uh we've got one that needs a signature, so we're going to, and so I went to the next one. It's just that lost one.
Okay.
I know it's been coming in for, I don't know how long, and I've, I've told them already, the product, put it in, they're not yet. Thanks.
They've been telling me about those four months, so yeah, I'll leave that one to you then.
So we're going to have a look at the project um that's been supported by the active members through the members initiative, so. John, your name's on the list one.
It is, so.
Yeah, so this is the Great North Festival Railway for Tamfield Three Hundred. Obviously, as I'm sure you all know, and feel very way are celebrating its three hundredth anniversary. Um, I mean, you know, we've got two hundred another place, we've got three hundred in Stanley.
And this has been two awards, you can.
And they did win two awards the other night, and, and they are doing a huge amount of work, so this. This project is, is looking at celebrating that with an event. Um and that about promoting the local heritage and it involves community engagement. With activities and, and about community pride of place as well. The, the activity will boost the local economy and enhance the education around the rail sector. And, and, and the expected outcome, I think, is important, so it's about that increased media coverage. They have just won some awards as well, so highlighting the Stanley area as a whole. Uh as well as the World's oldest railway, which is Tamfield, attracting fifteen hundred visitors. Supporting local businesses and boosting the economic activity in the area. Um enhancing access for a hundred local residents through complimentary train tickets. Enabling participation in Tamfield Three Hundred celebrations. And strengthening again that community pride and the awareness of the history around Tamfield. Engaging with schools and groups, so benefiting the Stanley Town Council Awards are Tamfield, Havana and Stanley Hall. Um so the overall ask and request is, um. Spread between, sorry, five councillors, um which is Helen, David, Joan, Lee and Christine. And so it's just to see, we've all got the paper, to see if you are happy to accept that.
Okay.
Genesis. Now it looks good on. Just say that it will go to the board, because some of the free tickets still go to all the boards.
Just on the back of that as well, they've been brilliant over the last two years embracing Northumbria and Bloom and really being a big part of that. So it's great that they're starting to build this really good relationship. Um and it's nice that we can, or the councillors can do stuff back to help them the way they've supported Stanley with the Inglies. Very exciting.
And Tamfield's always been, uh, um, amazing, really, I've worked here for a long time. And the just, even in the early beginning, we were just teaching, you know. To get going and, and we have this huge, you know, thing that we should be proud of and. You know, all this stuff.
So many things.
It absolutely is.
Right, all right, and then we've got the date time of the next meeting, so the next time on, I think, the August, Tuesday, the eleventh of March. At six thirty here at the Green House and Green Club.
Beautiful.
Um.
But, and.
Yeah, so we, you have, um, part of this, so close the weekend to the public now and move on. And tackling.